Welcome to the Canton Township Board of Trustees meeting on July 13, 2021. We will call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Clerk Seagres, can you please take roll call?
Seagres Borninsky.
Good evening, I am here in the meeting and I'm in my home in Canton Township.
Foster.
Good evening from Canton Township.
Ganguly.
Hello from Canton Township.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening, I'm here at Canton Township.
Clerk Seagres is in attendance and he is in Canton Township. Slavens.
Good evening from Canton Township.
Snyderman.
Hello, and I'm also in Canton Township.
Welcome, everybody. I like to hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item and add-on G7, Consider Approval of a Wage Increase for Leisure Services Part-Time, Seasonal, and Variable Employees.
So moved.
Okay, Clerk Seagres, please take roll call on the motion.
Foster.
Hi.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagres, hi, Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, agenda approved. Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes for June 22, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagres, hi, Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, minutes approved. Let's look for a public comment. If you can raise your hand, if you're in the attendees, you can raise your hand for public comment, non-agenda items, or if you're on, I don't see any phones. If you're on a phone, you can dial *67. But any public comments? I don't see public comments. Any public comments? No public comment?
Madam Supervisor. I received a communication from a resident.
Okay.
Who wanted it read tonight. The, and it goes, this is from Christine Wolford. All right, hello, Michael, here's what I would, here's what I reported to Wayne County. One, Wayne County number 249651, trim trees, lawn barricade Sheldon Road, south of Ford Road. Two, Wayne County number 249647, greeting pool southwest corner Ford Road, Canton Center Road. Three, Wayne County number 249641, cup grass Sheldon Road, south of Ford Road, over Fellows Creek. Four, Wayne County number 249646, drive up Haggerty, Lily Sheldon, Michigan Avenue to Joy Road, looking for dead trees to replace and remove them. Five, Wayne County number 249644, remove and replace dead tree Sheldon Road, east side, south of Palmer. Six, Wayne County number 249643, very bad potholes, Canton Center, Hanford. I think this was redone not too long ago, very bad shape. Thank you.
Thank you, I assume those numbers were Wayne County numbers, okay.
I made no assumptions, I was asked to read that comment, and so I read it verbatim.
Thank you. I don't see any other public comment, hand for public comment. The next item on the agenda is a payment of the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagres, hi, Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Bills, motion is passed, thank you. Before we start the presentation, Jade is going to introduce two of his newer employees.
Yes, if we could promote John Salmy, and it is JS7085 in the attendees.
Okay, he wanted to introduce them to the board, thank you, go ahead.
I don't see their faces, so if they could put their videos on, that'd be great. But I just wanted to introduce, we've had two new employees that are now members of municipal services. The screen that you see that says JS7085 is, John says Linus, I still struggle with that, but he is the new facilities and project manager for the township, started on Monday. So we welcome John, and then right next to him is John Salmy, and he is the new DPW manager, and he's been on board with us for just about four weeks, I think, at this point, three or four weeks at this point. So I just wanted to, in this day and age of zooming and remote work, I wanted to put a face with the name so that you all see that we have new employees, and we're super excited for them to, to join us and look forward to, to their success as well as the township. So just wanted them to say hi.
Welcome, 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 John and John.
Welcome.
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 All right, thank you for joining us tonight. Next item on the agenda is a presentation. We have Michelle Ferguson and Mark Olson from Novak, Raffelis, and they are going to present the results of an organizational assessment that the team created. We want everybody to know before they start that this is, this was, this happened based on interviews of 25 individual employees and then focus groups, which I believe turned out to be a total of 58 employees interviewed. It, we will be going through as a township with the directors and the managers to look at some of these items that came up and determine how we are going to, you know, move forward or what, what it means to us, the impacts and things like that. But it, and in no way, you know, shows a bad light on anybody. I mean, I was really proud of everybody for, you know, interviewing and basically volunteering themselves to interview, but I really appreciate the hard work that everybody did. So whatever, you know, is in the assessment is not, again, a bad light on anyone. We have, we're an award-winning community, and employees mean a lot to us. I think, Michael, did you want to say, I think you said you want to say something also?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to preface with that as well, you know, Canton Township is seen by a number of agencies and a number of other municipalities as a regional leader and a leader in the state as well. We set the bar in a lot of ways, we go for accreditations that other communities don't go for, we do professional development that other people don't go for. And when I was elected clerk, the first thing the outgoing clerk told me was, never turn down an educational opportunity, and I, and I haven't. And I've continuously tried to push and push and push to become better and not stop advancing. And so when we reached out to Raffelis and Novak Group initially, it wasn't because we saw huge deficiencies inside the organization, it was because we had a pretty aggressive new board that had just done some, some pretty solid work coming together on some board goals and areas where we wanted to focus that maybe hadn't seen a lot of focus in, in, in the past. And so we asked for some assistance in kind of looking at where the organization stood and how we could deliver on, on those goals, right? We know what we have here at the township with regards to personnel. We've got amazing, amazing human capital here, a wealth of knowledge, and we are extremely grateful for everybody. So when we talk about areas for improvement, that includes the clerk's office, you know, with a little bit of humility, I have to kind of take a little bit of criticism every once in a while, but also understanding that it's, it's for the best. And, and so we, we appreciate you all and we're grateful for, for the work that everyone does.
Thank you. Diane, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to, and I agree with what both of you have said. You know, we're so proud of all of, all of you and all of our employees. This is just helping us push a little harder. I know everybody works really hard, and this in no means is a way to dismiss any hard work that we've done, but you know, we want to, we want to push a little harder. And so you guys are doing a great job. We're going to work together to try and push a little, step a little further out there and move forward together. So we appreciate all that you do, and we're ready to, to do a little more.
Thank you. And with that, Michelle and Mark, if you would like to take over. Thank you for attending today, I appreciate it. It's great, the Zoom is great, I tell you, you can be all over the place and still meet.
Mark is actually zooming in from Minnesota today, and I am in North Carolina. So yes, Zoom does allow us to be in literally multiple places at, at one time. And so, good evening to all of you. It's a, it's a pleasure to be, to be with you, to see some familiar faces. It was nice when we were doing this work, we were actually able to do it in person. And so that's not something that we can, we say it happened in 2020 and 2021. I think, I remember when, when I was, when I was there in Canton, you were right in the middle of one of your major vaccination sites, vaccination clinics. And so we know that it's been a very, very busy time at the township. My name is Michelle Ferguson, and, and with me this evening is Mark Olson. And, and as has been said, we're with Raffelis, formerly the Novak Consulting Group, and we were part of the consulting team who led this organizational assessment. And I, and I just have to start by saying how much we, we fully support the comments that have been made about the role of an organizational assessment. Our, our firm works with the local governments and utilities across the country. We have literally done hundreds and hundreds of assessments like this in communities just like Canton, all across the country. And the purpose of those reviews is exactly as what's been said. It's to understand where an organization is today and help it, help it continue to improve with the real goal of making sure that the organization is set up to provide the services that the Canton community expects. And certainly what we learned about the Canton community is they have high expectations for the services that the township provides. And I would say absolutely that the good news in the headline is that you have an incredibly dedicated workforce who takes a tremendous amount of pride in the work that they do in service to the, the residents and community and stakeholders within, within Canton. So technology is great, and I'm going to attempt to share my screen and hope that I share the right screen with you as we kind of talk through a PowerPoint presentation that we have that really highlights some of the, some of the key, the key attributes or the key results, if you will, of our, of our assessment. And are you seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Great. So what we'd like to do tonight, and Mark and I will tag team a little bit, is we'll talk a bit about the overview of the project, we'll talk about the recommendations. And you all, I would imagine, have a copy of the final report that we provided, and then certainly be available to answer any questions that you all, that you all may have. And just as a little bit of a reminder, I've talked a bit about the purpose of the project, but more specifically, we were really focused on looking at things like operations, staffing, and structure within the township. It should be noted that we were focused on all of the township operations with the exclusion of police and fire, although we did have an opportunity to talk to the directors of those areas to get, to get their input on the organization as well, too. We, in terms of our approach, we had an opportunity to meet with each of you as part of the leadership of the township. As was mentioned, we had a wide variety of one-on-one in-person interviews with staff, and also conducted a series of focus groups to further involve staff in the, in the, in the conversation, to hear from them, their ideas of what's working well within the organization and what their ideas for improvement were. We take both a qualitative and a quantitative approach to an organizational assessment like this. So in addition to the conversations we have with staff, I'm sure they will tell you, we peppered many of them with a lot of requests for data and information about the township and about their operations, because we, we look at, from a data and analysis perspective, we look at how the organization is structured and staff, we look at workload, things of that nature to help us develop the recommendations. And the final report that you have includes 27 specific recommendations that were, were really based on that qualitative and quantitative analysis that we did. Before we get into the recommendations, just a couple of overview, kind of contextual comments that, that I would say are important, that really set the stage for the recommendations that, that we provided in the, in the report. Based on our conversations with you all as well as with staff, it was very obvious to us that you all have a very strong vision for the future of the community and the organization. And as I mentioned, it was, it was also very clear to us that the community does have a high expectation for the services that are provided. And, and the good news is that the township's really living up to those expectations. You have a stable financial position, which not every community can say, and that really allows you to have dedicated funding for some of your key infrastructure. And I think, as was mentioned, too, the fact that you have so many departments that are focused on accreditation really demonstrate that the environment for continuous improvement that already exists within, within the organization broadly. What we saw, too, in terms of our observations and ultimately the recommendations, is that this is, was a great opportunity, a great time, despite the pandemic, it was a great time to do an assessment like this, because it really is an opportunity to ensure that the organization and the elected officials are really aligned in terms of the vision for the future, and beginning to ensure that the organization, from a structural standpoint, as well as a policy and procedure standpoint, has the capacity to really implement the vision that you all have for the Canton community. We also, as I mentioned, really focus on data. We want to make sure that you all, as the elected leadership, have the ability to make data-based and informed decisions about policy choices that come before you. And so we have identified a series of opportunities for enhanced data collection within the organization that ultimately, we believe, will help you all make more informed decisions about services, about resource allocation, certainly about staffing and structure overall, too. We know that as your community continues to, to reach or move towards build-out status, that may change what those organizational priorities and needs, and needs are. And so being attuned to, to having the data available to see where trends will take the organization and your service delivery needs will be really critical for the future. And technology, we can't, can't have conversations about organizations today without technology, Zoom withstanding, that there's really an opportunity, we see within the organization, to leverage technology to really enhance organization-wide efficiencies. Keep going the wrong way. We, when we develop our recommendations, we take, we use what we call our six R approach, and we talk with staff in our, in our interviews about this approach. We really look at the responsibilities that you have as a municipality, as a township. We look at the resources that are available to you to achieve those, those responsibilities. We look at requirements, you know, what are your, your legal requirements or any mandates that are in place that really do provide direction for the organization? And then we look at results, you know, what are the service levels that you provide? What are the outcomes of the services? Those really lead to our, ultimately to our recommendations that you see within, within our report. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Olson to talk, keep doing that, to talk about recommendations.
Good evening, appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight. I apologize for the lighting, I'm in a courtyard hotel, and this is the best I can do. It's a little bit Boris Karloff, but bear with me, it's not, not evil. I'm, I'm, we try to be a force for good. We, we decided that we tried to boil down some of these, the recommendations, as we mentioned before, we have about 27 of them in the report. We'd recommend that you read the report. It's, it's a wonderful story about the successes of your organization, as well as some ideas about how some things might change. But we thought we might walk you through it by looking at the same items that we look at as we're going through the result, or through the process of looking at responsibilities, resources, requirements, and results, as well as road back. And that's the categories that we're going to look at now. Responsibilities generally referring to the responsibilities that you need to fulfill and what changes might help you to improve service and effectiveness. And we really saw three broad categories of this. First, it was confirming the services that you've chosen to provide, and that would seem to be an obvious point, but many organizations don't really know what they're doing day-to-day. It's, you continue on, you're working hard, everyone is getting their job done, but people aren't really taking the time, they don't have the time, to step back and question, are we really doing the right things? Are we really doing the right things in the right way? One of the first steps that you can do to address that is developing a program inventory. And it's not just defining what constitutes a program and the elements of your existing programs, but it's also providing a framework so you can discuss prioritization and the funding of the various programs. And that's going to become important as we talk about some other ideas in, in, in a few minutes. A second area was looking at how you might possibly reorganize, that you could bring similar services together and use existing resources more effectively. Part of that would be relocating and establishing a formal, formal service level or agreements for facilities maintenance. There's nothing that says where facilities should say, there's no hard and fast rule. We found organizations whereby, because of history, it's located in, in a parks and recreation organization, because primarily as organizations develop, that may be where it started. And mostly, we would find a facilities maintenance organization in the public works facility, and there are good reasons for that. It allows the, allows the service to better utilize some of the equipment, as well as the skilled staff, and use them in, in a cross-trained way so that they can accomplish more, given the resources that they have. And part of that was also looking at service level agreements, because it's not just a matter of moving a box from one place in an organization chart to another. It's also identifying and making sure that a critical function such as municipal services is adequately responding to the needs and the desires and the requirements of the other departments. And you, you can accomplish this by looking at service level agreements, something that you're going to formally review and accept and establish at the, at the beginning of every year, at least reviewing them every year, to identify how they're going to provide those services, what are the service expectations, and provide clarity and understanding and shared understanding on both sides of the equation about what services will be provided and how they'll be provided. Also, we looked at the opportunity of creating a separate IT department and a department supervised by an IT director. Technology is so very important in all organizations today, primarily organizations like the public sector, where you're trying to accomplish more with limited resources. And the ability to leverage your IT investments in, in a responsible and appropriate manner that increases the efficiency and effectiveness of your staff is a primary responsibility of you as a board, is to make sure these types of important resources are available. And we think that can be enhanced by having a separate IT department and providing an IT director to, to focus that effort. The third area was supporting staff resources by giving them a clear understanding of employment conditions, performance expectations, and opportunities for professional development. First and foremost there, it's reviewing and updating the township's merit system. It's an important part of your employment package, your employment agreements with all of your employees and a significant number of your employees directly. We would recommend comparing the current approach to some of the peer communities and ensuring compliance with board policy and objectives, federal and state guidelines, as well as current practices. A second idea was developing an employee performance evaluation program, collaborating with the union leaders to, to identify how this could be accomplished in an effective manner. It's not unheard of to do employee performance reviews with union members, as well as with your merit staff, and it's important. And it was one of the things that we heard consistently in both the focus groups, as well as in the management interviews, this, this desire on the part of staff to get more feedback on their performance. This isn't something that was driven by management requests, this was driven by the employees. People want to know what they're doing, how well they're doing, how they're contributing to the organization's performance, and how they can do better. Also, we looked at developing an organization-wide workforce development and succession planning program. This is important in all organizations, but especially important in an organization like Canton Township, where you've got significant employees, significant resources that are looking forward to a well-deserved retirement in the near future. And you need to be making plans today to handle those issues and those transitions tomorrow. And you can do this with a transition and succession plan. We would recommend establishing a succession planning committee to help support that. Next, we're going to look at resources, and this is identifying the resources that you need and how you can array them appropriately. First, we're looking at understanding financial impacts of the operating choices. We mentioned before that you lack information on some of, some critical points about your operation. Part of that is understanding the true costs. The first point was developing a comprehensive cost allocation plan that would provide clarity on the full cost of township operations. Now, we understand that you do take this to a certain degree in identifying costs of services and using internal service funds to, to identify and segregate those and charging back to departments, and that's certainly a good first step. But using a comprehensive cost allocation plan goes one step further in terms of allocating all indirect and overhead costs, and it helps you to understand what the costs of your services are as you're making important decisions about what to expand, what to contract, what to add, or what to reduce. And it's important to understand the true cost components. Also, we are recommending conducting a water and sewer utility rate study to determine effective rates for covering opital, operating and capital expenditures. It's important to do this perhaps every five years, but to make sure that the appropriate charges are falling on the appropriate persons and consumers of the water and sewer services. It's something that you would probably contract out. It doesn't have, it doesn't happen as of, that often, but it's important to use this as a baseline to make sure, and to support, and to communicate in a transparent way how these charges are established to your client base. We also looked at providing additional management resources to support professional operations, and this is one that has a bit of cost associated with it. We believe it'd be important to create a deputy supervisor position. Canton Township is a modern municipal organization, close to 100,000 population with a significant number of staff, and you need to have that type of backup support to help you function effectively and to allow the supervisor to focus her efforts on, on other areas, including working with the board, working with external parties, and helping to form policy procedures and guidelines about how the operate, how the function, the township should function. So creating that deputy will provide that professional resource. We also believe it's, it's important at this point, given the range of operations in municipal services, to create a deputy director in that department as well. It's important also because there's turnover in the staff, and there's expected to be more turnover. And, and in the short term, that deputy director position can help to provide a resource to meet immediate needs and fill in as you're identifying acceptable, appropriate, outstanding replacements for the people who will be leaving during that time, in addition to providing additional support to the director of the department. We mentioned before creating a separate IT department overseen by an IT director. It's important because it's going to elevate the role of IT in the organization and reflect its strategic importance. We also recommend making the IT director a member of the senior leadership team, again, to elevate these issues and to make sure that voice is at the table. The third area under resources was assessing the sourcing of township legal services to determine the most cost, the most cost-effective approach. And that essentially is aligning the approach with the service demands and the market conditions, and these can change over time. You will reach a point as, as you're developing and encountering new legal issues and new legal challenges, it may be that you need to assess and readjust that mix of both internal and external services, and it's important to do that on, on a relatively frequent basis, because this is a source of considerable expense for the township, and you want to make sure that you're getting the best value from the resources that you're applying. Next, we're going to look at requirements. Excuse me, and that's looking at, you know, providing appropriate direction, as we mentioned, to meet service delivery goals and operating plans. And we think that you can support the township staff and the township operations with appropriate guidelines through policies and procedures. And generally, we found there are policies and procedures throughout the organization, however, they need to be updated, and they need to be centralized and made available to staff in, in a format that's easy for them to access, as well as in language that's easy for them to understand. So we think, three examples are updating and centralizing the treasurer's office policies and procedures, updating the policies for the core functions and reviewing them manually, also streamlining the purchase approval process and finance. Currently, you have six tiers of, of purchase approval thresholds, and it can be confusing how, to, to the departments, how, which, which threshold applies in the given situation. There could be an opportunity, there certainly is an opportunity to look, to look at simplifying that and reducing that burden, both on the department staff as well as finance staff. We also saw an opportunity to update and centralize the finance and budget policies and procedures. We would identify improvements based on the board's strategic direction and GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Association, best practices. Moving on to results. Moving on to results, we view results as that mechanism for connecting responsibilities. Resources and requirements to create the outcomes that you need. We saw three areas, providing management and staff with feedback on performance towards policy and objectives. We mentioned before that staff are desiring to get more feedback on how they're doing. So we would recommend developing and implementing an organization wide performance management system. And this really focuses on creating annual work plans at the department level and using measures to track performance against these established goals. It also will help support and maintain an ongoing dialogue between your management team and their staff members. A second area would be developing an outcome based performance measurement program. Which is implementing performance measures that track board policy and objectives, programs and services and individual performance. Essentially linking them all back to your strategic goals and objectives from the individual level of the of the staff member. A second area where results can be improved is articulating formal service level standards and tracking key performance indicators. And this is will be helpful in identifying performance gaps and improvements, staffing needs and service delivery alternatives. That can ensure that you're going to align with the community's expectations. The third area was engaging the the board in reviewing and approving leisure service cost recovery policy. Now that Leisure Services is doing a fantastic job, they're a leader in the industry. And they are applying the best practices and guidelines of national organizations. And these are all best practices. However, we see that we've learned that they haven't really reviewed some of these policies with the board to get their feedback. And this can be an important point because we're essentially talking about what is the level of public subsidy for different services? What's going to be appropriate and what would be expected of the community and acceptable to the community? And this is an important conversation for you to have with Leisure Services in a transparent manner. So that you can consider what impacts the growing diversity of the community has on when you're talking about how to prioritize programs events. You want to have this information available. It can help you to identify where you want to either expand very effective programs. Or perhaps eliminate ineffective programs. And also, it will help you when you're considering alternative service delivery in terms of how you resource these programs, whether it's internally or externally. The final area we're going to talk about is roadmap. Essentially, these are the mechanisms that can help you as you support in support planning for the future. The first area was budgeting, using the budget process to develop communicate communicate shared understanding of priorities and commitments. And we had three elements there, implementing priority based budgeting. This is this is a heavy lift and it's something that you but you can take in steps. And and there are some of some of our recommendations that we've mentioned are necessarily will have to come before you actually get to this. But these are things you can start to work on now as well. Priority based budgeting is going to help you to identify available resources and priority as well as evaluate programs against these priority results. And developing outcome based performance metrics for all programs. So it's it's a goal to get to that, but there there are steps to get to it as well. So also preparing an annual budget document that meets G F O A best practices. Government Finance Officers Association has had a lot of experience with working with a whole range of governments as they've looked at their budgets. And how to make it a more effective communications tool and planning tool. And that's really the purpose. It's not about how to make it prettier, it's how to make the information more readily available and useful both to the board. As well as to the citizens. Also, developing a long term financial plan for the township. Now, your finance function does work and every year is developing a a longer longer term financial plan. We would like to see that in a more robust process where they're collaborating with department leadership, the elected officials and industry professionals. As well as developing a system that can compare the actual performance to the forecast and making regular reports on that. A second area in the roadmap area is looking at developing, implementing and sustaining township's technology direction and choices. You did have and you do have a township I T strategic plan and we think it's important for you to update and implement that. And use that new I T director to 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 lead that process. Also, we believe there should be an I T governance structure and there is a structure in place. It's a bit informal. We'd like to see that again, a more robust establishment of this governance committee. It would be a multi department group that would help to identify, it would standardize the process for requests and approval. And it would make sure that all voices are heard at the table and that you're making the best decisions at the best times, using the best available equipment and technology. To meet your operating needs. A third area was developing a data collection plan to evaluate long term election resource needs. I don't know if there's anything in this report that is more up in the air than are more speculative in terms of what's going to happen with our elections in the future. And we can't really predict what the next course is that you absolutely should take. But one thing we can recommend is that it's important for you to start looking at what is the data that would be important in making future decisions. And identify how you can both collect and maintain that data now. So you're in a better position as this issue is developed and as you respond to changes at both the federal and state levels. So there could be changes in voter preferences, technology, voting rights and election laws that might necessitate. A data driven decision process and we want to help you be in the position to support and accomplish that. A fourth area is looking at developing a communication needs assessment and organizational communication plan. It's important to have not just a social media account or several accounts or more than that. It's it's as well as a website, it's important to have a a plan developed about how you want to communicate. Your activities, your vision, your mission, what you're doing, how you're using your funds, what you're doing and what you're accomplishing in the community. And acting as a a marketplace of ideas about new issues and initiatives in the community as well. It's important to have a communications need assessment in an organizational communication plan so that you can prioritize what communication needs. You want to meet, what objectives you're trying to fulfill, as well as what communications channels will be the most appropriate to use to meet those objectives. Finally, creating an economic strategic or an economic development strategic plan. Yes, you've been growing, you've been very successful, but you need to prepare for that next step. We mentioned before, you're reaching that maturity, a build out of the community. You're seeing some changes with some of the big box stores you're seeing, and these are economic forces that are certainly beyond Canton Township to predict. But you will be responsible for responding to them. And having an economic development strategic plan will help you focus on some new issues, perhaps redevelopment and info opportunities. And recognizing that there may be changes to where you're making, what initiatives you pursue. Or what businesses you're you're looking to attract. But having that conversation today is going to help prepare you for tomorrow in responding to this changing economy. Those were the recommendations and I'm going to turn it back to Michelle for discussion.
We certainly appreciate the opportunity to to work with your organization to get to know your staff. And hopefully to be able to help them as they continue to provide such great service to the community. I I would say the supervisor said it at the outset that really the next step in the process is for the organization to to digest. All these twenty seven recommendations. This is usually where I talk about patience. You have a very busy organization and you all, I think, talked a little bit at the beginning about the the vision that you all have for the future. Is a very is a very robust one. And the recommendations that are included in this report or implementation of these recommendations. Must be done in a careful way so as to not disrupt the existing work that's happening in the organization. Obviously, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on and so the sequencing and the pacing of implementation will take time. That's usually where the the patience comment comes in. The organization needs time to digest these and to determine how to fit this in with the existing work. That that your staff is already is already doing incredibly capably. So with that, I will turn it back over to the supervisor and we're happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, let's see, there we go. There, thank you. So we have a lot of attendees here and I noticed a lot of them are. Employees. So if anyone would like to ask a question, you want to raise your hand before we go to the staff. Okay. All right, that's okay. You can still ask questions. It doesn't mean if you don't ask a question tonight, you can ask later. So we'll start. Kate?
Thank you. I didn't know if you saw my hand. So prior to being on this board, I was on the school board. And one thing that the school board implemented. The last, I would say, three or four years that I was on it was. To not only do community surveys to see how the district was performing. And and they surveyed, you know, parents, community members, staff members and students. But one part of this survey was also sort of evaluating the board. And then the board also would do a self evaluation every year. And so one thing that I didn't see when I was reading through all sixty six pages of the report. Was something about how the board gets feedback. And I mean, ultimately, that would be decided at an election probably. But, you know, in between the four years. Do you have recommendations for how the board can be assessed and how we can evaluate ourselves?
So I would say what we typically see in in local governments in terms of evaluations is that you're right. Certainly, it comes with elections, but it also comes with community engagement. And so many communities that we have worked with have developed pretty robust strategic planning processes. As a way of engaging the public in hearing from them about what's important to them. In terms of the role of the local government that's providing services to them. You know, our experience has often been that unfortunately, a lot of the members of a community may not know the individuals. That are serving on their on their elected body, but they certainly know when their trash isn't picked up. They know when their leaves aren't picked up, they know when their permit takes long. And so those are typically the ways that we see local governments evaluating themselves as looking at services. And how those services are meeting the needs of the community.
Yeah, I and I think that's important, but unfortunately, we often don't. Get that feedback unless there's something, you know, bad happening or something that that's not happening that should be happening. And the the other thing that struck me was your recommendation for employee evaluations. And I think that's really important. I I can't imagine trying to do a job and not really getting that kind of feedback. Because I think everyone wants to know, you know, how they're doing and what they can do to do better or if they're doing a good job. And so I I just personally feel like. As a board that maybe we should implement something because we want our employees to have that. And we should be leading from the top and also allowing for that feedback on us.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Anyone else? Any staff members, directors, Summer?
So I'll just make a few comments and then a question. Thank you very much for this detailed report. I've read it twice. I plan to go back and read it again because there is a lot in there. But it I think a lot of the recommendations that you make in the report are things that are reflected in our organizational. And strategic goals that we want for the township. I know one of the things that I've been talking quite a bit about is communications and being more active in the way that we communicate, not only with the public. But the way that we communicate internally as a Canton Township team. And so I would like to see more about how we explore some of those recommendations. And also, I just wanted to lift up the importance of annual work plans. It's something that we do at work, it's something that we have great templates for and it's something that we use. To do our annual reviews every year to see how. To see how much progress we are making on our annual plans. And so, you know, what Kate brought up was a great idea to kind of assess not only the staff. But also to assess the board and see what progress we're making on our goals as well. And the only thing, the other thing that I would ask is, and this is, I think, more directed towards Anne Marie and maybe Michael and Diane. Is with some of the recommendations, what is the process for determining what recommendations that we are accepting? And how are we moving that process forward?
So what we're doing is we've taken each of these twenty seven recommendations and we've created, I've created like a draft timing plan. And I'm going over with each of the staff members. I've given it to them, they're looking at it and kind of assessing through the report what they can and cannot do in terms of timing. And then we'll hold several meetings, I think, with myself, Michael and Diane and the directors and go through, I mean, the details. And really mesh mesh those out and then we can report to the board that part of it. As you will see, one of the R B As that is being presented tonight, we want to pull ahead and implement right away. Which was item G six. And then you will start to see some R B As like for the twenty seventh, we have two more that you want to pull up right away. Is of the twenty seventh after everybody's had time to ingest or digest a little bit more. So that's that's my plan. My Michael and Diane, did you want to say anything more? That's our plan here.
No, I mean, I know there's a lot, you know, a lot we have on, we have planned and this is very aggressive. So, you know, we have to make sure that we take our time and do everything. Not slowly, but get it done correctly. So as you're talking to all the directors, it's important that we, you know, get things done. But that we take our time and we're mindful of it and certainly keeping the the rest of the board. Privy to it during board meetings and letting them know where we're at is going to be important. I don't know, Michael, do you have anything else to say?
Well, yeah, so a lot of the organizational wide goals, so one through fourteen. Many of them are pretty pretty involved that would require substantial change to how we currently operate. So not only are we coming off of last year and a lot of departments are still playing catch up. Not only do we have increased demand, flooding, garbage issues. Leisure C L S has staffing issues because of the overall labor market. So in some ways, we're still recovering from work that wasn't accomplished last year or things that have set us back. We've got additional work requirements and then we're talking about doing some substantial changes. So maybe the the more administrative things, right? So switching from kind of incremental line based budgeting to a project or a priority based budgeting, it's kind of a multi year. And it's a whole different different framework. It would involve all of us kind of relearning how to how to budget. Things like developing a comprehensive cost allocation plan. Long term financial plans, program inventory, right? So going through and everybody evaluating our individual programs and kind of coming together. And then putting together work plans for them and then tying them back to the board goals. That stuff is going to be a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of like day in, day out work. So. And I'm, you know, so so that'll be a work in progress as we move forward. That's a multi year, I think, a plan of attack. The more, you know, structured things, right? So Anne Marie is putting something on the agenda for tonight. I think what we would probably want to do is get board buy in in general on the plan. And then kind of move things in in phases, right? So. We talked about I T being central to kind of the board goals, right? Technology and how to implement that for accessibility for the residents. So if we're going to talk about establishing a separate I T department and then hiring an I T director. Well, that's something that probably brought to the board earlier. The deputy supervisor position might be something that we would bring. The deputy supervisor position might be something that we would bring, want to bring forward earlier. So, yeah, I mean, so, so I don't know. I think essentially we want to evaluate all of these things, try to come up with a realistic framework for how we kind of walk and chew down at the exact same time and then strategically kind of move in this direction. And then get board buy-in in general and then get board buy-in on individual items that would require a board approval, new positions, restructuring of departments and divisions.
I guess that was the basis for my question. Maybe I didn't word it well. I mean, I know some of the recommendations are a big lift. Some of them are have a cost and budget implications to them. Some of them could not possibly be done within a year or even two years. It would take multiple years to do some of them. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out, like, what is the plan to prioritize the recommendations to get buy-in from the board on the different recommendations? Or to even see if it's something, if if different recommendations are something that we have an appetite for doing and how, what is the process for determining that? And how is the board, the seven-member board involved in that process?
Michelle and Mark, do you have any insight into other clients and how you recommend they move forward on the implementation of these plans?
I think what you have laid out is is exactly what we typically would recommend for an organization. But, you know, when you, as you said, this is a 70-some page report that takes a while to digest just to just to read through it. The unfortunate thing is that there are really no easy recommendations. There wasn't a ton of low-hanging fruit, which is both a good thing and a bad thing when it comes to implementation. Because as has been said, many of these recommendations are multi-year. And and as we have worked with communities over several years, you know, they they use the assessment as a, as a really an accountability tool. They develop general timeframes for implementation. But we also appreciate that conditions change over the course of several years. And so a recommendation that we make in, you know, June or July of 2021 may not be the appropriate recommendation in June or July of 2022. Conditions change and so flexibility is important within the organization. But but we advocate for a process by which you all have the opportunity to review progress towards implementation. So just as been stated by the supervisor, putting together timeframes for each of the recommendations and then coming back to the board to review that. Some of some of these are, I would imagine, they are operational in nature. They are best practices that your organization and your staff is already working on. Updating policies and procedures, things like that. Though some of those things you may, frankly, you may never know about because they are just things that your organization does because that's what a good organization does. There may be policy implications, however, that do rise to your purview, to your jurisdiction that will need to come back to you, things like budget allocations for new positions or new technology, things of that nature, obviously, will will absolutely come, I would imagine, would come back to the board for approval, either as part of the budget process or through some other, some other means. And so, again, I think it's important to look at the assessment kind of from multiple perspectives, that it is kind of multi-layered in that way, that there's certain things that are just by us having conversations with your staff, they've already started thinking about some of the things and these are already, they're starting to move on some of these things. There are others that are just going to take a longer timeframe. And so having a structured process to come back to you all, maybe on a, you know, quarterly basis, just to give an update, may be a helpful way to make sure that you all are have the information you need to know that progress is being made.
Thank you. And like one of the ones like Wendy, Wendy has a lot of heavy lifting. And it might just be that, as Michelle and Mark had said, since we are keeping operational, we might have to bring somebody in to help us once we decide, get to a certain point to jump off of. Well, you know, to keep things moving and sitting with Wendy and really going through a lot of these details and determining where we are, what we have to do. Do we have the resources to get there? That's, we can go through all of that as an internal team and then have a study session with the board. And we could do it piecemeal, like Michael said, we don't have to do it all at once. We can take one section and have study sessions on that section, like with the finance, that's a big one. Some of the work plan items. And also, as we had said, we're going to be reporting, as you know, some of the board goals and the progress on that. We could also include that progress at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, if you're taking annual performance evaluations and you're tying it into development of work plan, delivery of work plan, if RBAs that come before the board have a line item or have a line that where it indicates how this RBA drives forward a board goal, right? That's something that had existed in the past, kind of fell out as we became more alienated from the previous board goals. And there was no justification in expenditures. So like that, those are some things that like, so like to implement recommendation number two, it's multiple layers to it's recommendation number two and recommendation number three. You might, you might see that line reappear fairly quickly where people are starting to say, if, you know, if I want to buy something at the clerk's office, well, now I'm finding a way to justify it through what the seven of us decided would make sense. Now, some of them might be, you know, to comply with state law, right? That's a legitimate purchase. That would be my goal. I have to buy something because the state requires me to. So, but anyway.
Hi, yeah.
Yeah, hi. First of all, thanks to Michelle and Mark for providing such a detailed report. And my, my main comment here is, you know, not everything will come through RBAs. We need to have some sort of a, maybe quarterly updates is too soon. Maybe for some things, we need to update every six months to the board. Maybe we can do study sessions on that as to, you know, because one of the board members might think IT, IT might be a low priority issue. But for me, I think IT drives a lot of things in terms of communicating with with outside, from within the township government to the outside or, you know, keeping our data safe and things like that. So I was just hoping that, you know, we could have some sort of a, you know, an update every six months on a periodic basis. It's like, you know, three, maybe a quarterly one would not be. You know, it could, it will not be, it would be too quick to have quarterly updates. But probably every six months, we can do a study session on our goals on these assessments and the ideas that have been provided and recommendations that have been made so that we know we are aligning with our board goals and moving in the right direction. So that's, that's what I'm hoping from this organizational assessment.
And that's part of recommendation number three. If you look that we, that the progress towards the board goals as with results to this plan would be, this would be, progress would be reported to the board on a quarterly basis.
Thank you. Kate?
Um, so I also, I was remiss in not saying thank you because this was a big scope of work that was undertaken. So thank you, Michelle and Mark and and everyone else at your company who was involved. I really liked the way that this little presentation was set up. I found it, you know, just seeing it for the first time tonight, I liked the way it was organized. Having read through the the whole report, this was a great synopsis. So I know, Anne Marie, you were saying that it was going to be posted to the internal sites where employees can access it. Is there the possibility that it could be emailed to the board also?
Yes, yes, Michelle, you can send us the report that you just gave us, right? The the presentation? Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Stephen?
Yes, also, thank you very much for the presentation and the work that you did in our community. I see projects like this as opportunities to get outside input and not just from your organization as consultants, but the ability to understand what our peer communities, municipalities are doing around the state and around the country as well and and find sort of nuggets of gold that we can implement here that have been successful elsewhere. So I appreciate that type of input, that type of analysis. But then I always go back to looking at our staff, our directors and their staff that report to them as the people who know our community the best and which of these things will be appropriate, which will be successful, which ones might not work out. So at this point in the process, that's when I start looking to them to give us their input on what they think it will take to implement some of these things, what it means to our organization if we implement them, that it might mean that we can't implement something else as fast. What are the trade-offs? What are the costs? So Anne Marie, you and your core team, that's, that's sort of what I I look at as their responsibility to now take this and funnel down to us. What are the recommendations that we do and in what timeframes, like you mentioned, that we would do? So I'm, I'm glad, I've, I've, unlike Summer, I've only read it once. But I will read it again. For a question for Michelle and Mark, for some of these, there is detail in the document. I mean, we have the 27 recommendations and what they are. There is some detail in the document. I'm not a professional in this area. I'm an elected official, sort of an overseer. And are there more detailed implementation plans or examples that you guys can give us? I mean, you said an in-depth water study or utilizing the budgeting process differently. We, I mean, I've, as a, as a resident community leader, I've seen the budgeting process nine times now and it's always been very informative. It's always been very understandable. But then when you get, we get down to what you're saying, how do we then apply what should change in that more than just, you know, you should, more than just the five paragraphs that you put in that section? Do you have examples from other communities that you're talking about? Same with the water study. What are we doing different, what should we be doing differently than we do today in our water study and our, in our cost basis of coming up with our water rates, things like that?
So the short, the short answer to that question is yes, absolutely. And I've actually had some, some conversations with staff already about some follow-up questions they've had to get examples from other communities. So when, when we submit our final report to you all, we don't, we don't discontinue our relationship with you all. And so we are always available to help provide examples or samples of things that may be helpful as you go through the implementation process.
Diane?
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quick, and I appreciate everything that's been done. But, you know, with the water rate study, we, it was kind of, we do that. And it was kind of unique because the last four years, our rate, you know, water rates have dropped. But we've done things to cause that, which a rate study, I don't think normally would do because we've added the water tower, we've left Detroit and gone to Yucca. So and I know, I believe Jade, we have a water rate study, the pretty deep dive one coming up within the next few years, if I'm correct. It just, and I know it was shocking for you to see how our waters have, water rate has gone down. But it's, it's, we just, a couple of things happened. We got the water tower, which is, you know, helped save dollars. And then leaving Detroit and going to Yucca has, you know, it just, but we have been doing the water rate studies.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I asked Diane what, what we should, that, because I, we have been, I've been doing that for nine years too, and we've made those plans based on those studies. So I'm interested to know the details of what we should be either doing differently or is it a different kind of study that we should be doing? And I don't need answers tonight. I just want to make sure that when, when you drop the report on Anne Marie's desk, that those questions will be answered and and we can get more of a deep dive into what should be doing differently per your recommendations. And then we decide if it's appropriate for us.
Kate?
Thanks, Stacy.
Thanks. So I guess what I am puzzled at, and this is for the the board. And maybe I'm kind of piggybacking on what Summer was saying. I'm not sure. But wondering how it is that the board is giving feedback on the, on the recommendations and how we're deciding what's going to be implemented? Are we just saying, yes, this, this is a great plan. We think everything in it should be implemented. Or are we going to be looking at the different recommendations and say, yeah, you know, we've, we've looked at this, we've had feedback from the employees, we've had feedback from the directors. And this is something that we are interested in going forward with or and and also, you know, going along with that, you know, are we trying to prioritize? And so I just, I guess that's where I'm wondering, you know, where you know, the trustees especially are able to give input on, on this.
Well, the big items, I mean, in my opinion, are we have the the staff that needs to digest it and help direct us as to what this means to the organization because they would know the best. And then by doing that, we can give, we can hold a study session with the board and talk about that feedback and then bring your, you know, your opinions in and guidance with that and help set to those priorities. But we will get recommendations for the, you know, the board, the staff members that that work this and understand how we can change it or not, or what we would need to do.
Right. And definitely, we need to do that. I guess what I'm trying to get at is that we already have RBAs that, like, there's one on the agenda tonight, and then you said there's some more coming up. And so I guess what I would like to know is before there's an RBA, is there going to be a process for us to give some feedback so that if we don't agree with the RBA, that it's not, you know, on the agenda until, until we have given some input?
Some of these are time sensitive in terms of, they kind of lead to some of our goals, moving our goals forward. But definitely you get, I mean, you get to getting the board packet, you know, before we put it out. If you guys, you know, object to anything or have input or strong opinions, I mean, we can definitely change, update RBAs or you have discussions in the board meeting.
Yeah. And i- if you disagree even with tonight's RBA, please feel free to vote nay. You know, because we have to be very open with the public as we're making these decisions. And if you don't agree with something, I mean, you know,
Definitely.
Yeah.
No, that's definitely understood. I guess I thought maybe we would have a more broad discussion on, you know, all of the, all of the recommendations or, you know, taking them in the categories that were, you know, for example, that were presented tonight. Because it seems like maybe some of them might need to be prioritized. And you, and you did say that they're, some are time sensitive. So just wondering, like, and I'm not saying, definitely needs to be done, you know, as an open board discussion. But I guess, you know, I was just wondering where that mechanism is for us to give feedback on, you know, and definitely wanting to hear the feedback from the employees and, and, you know, everyone, basically.
Okay, Summer?
And and just going back to
And and just going back to prioritization for a minute and the board's voice and prioritization. I know that some things have a timeline, um but if things have budget implications, that might mean that we can't do something else um further down the line. And I think the board needs to know that and understand that before um we make some of these budget decisions.
Yes, and then we could we could definitely hold study sessions with them with that. Next week, I mean, we don't have a study session next week. So scheduled, we can talk about some of those priorities, you know, take a chunk next week if you'd like. Before we bring the other RBAs forward on the twenty seventh.
And is it possible for us to get um an idea or a list of something on some of the things, the recommendations that you want to move more quickly than others so that we can evaluate those and and see how they fit into the priorities?
Yes, we can do that and we can, if you want, we can have a study session on it next next Tuesday.
Thank you.
We have an open agenda on that on next Tuesday, so that would work. Okay. All right, so that'll be our next next week. We'll take some of those the ones that we believe should be prioritized and we can discuss it. Any other questions? Michael ahead.
Now, just not necessarily questions, you know, being luckily both being a trustee, but also being one of the full, you know, statutory executive elective officials, I got to participate um in the process. Probably a lot more um, you know, a lot more by design. And um and so I don't have a lot of a lot of questions because got to see the initial report, got to engage with our friends and and look at that, push some things around, was able to meet again on the uh uh on this on these items. And I spent a lot of time with the report. I um I mean, like is that I memorize, I mean, I have that kind of brain, but I kind of memorize where most of the stuff is and and how how the how the report feeds into itself. And so I don't have any type of type of question. I'll speak more in genera- generalities. One, what I like about the process and the methods that were done was using focus groups. By creating focus groups and allowing employees from all different classifications within our organization to participate in the true analysis of the organization, I think it created the ability for us to hear a voice that isn't typically at the board meetings, right? We typically have senior staff and elected officials here. We miss out on a lot of what is truly going on inside the organization through that through that way. And it's not effective, it's not efficient to be constantly, you know, going to everybody all the time and trying to understand, you know, the intricacies of all the other issues. You wouldn't be able to run anything, but this was a great temperature taking of the entire organization. So I'm really grateful for that that method right there, which I think was invaluable. I also like the idea, we spent a substantial amount of time with board members and elected officials uh one-on-one. So really gave individuals the ability to kind of talk about issues that they had that maybe they feel comfortable talking about at a public board meeting or um if they had personal uh or or one specific issue as an elected official, they were able to get that out. So that was also, I think, really, really helpful. The recommendations themselves, um I I'm super excited about them. A lot of them are fairly ambitious, um but I also like um you know, it's hard for me to understand what success looks like if we don't if it's not measured and if there's no true accountability around it. Like inside my office, I feel like we do a pretty decent job. You know, we've won awards, right? So let's pat myself on the back for that. But is that also a good indicator, right? Like I may have won an award, but if somebody came in and looked at our record retention policy, would they would we hit all of the best practices when it comes to record retention? You know, I I would like to say that that we would. I don't know that would. I don't know that um, you know, so so to that end, I think that when you look at what we've done, right? So November, there's an election. The board very quickly pulled together, did some pretty good vision, mission work and some board goals, was able to kind of say what we want the next four years to look like and beyond, what kind of the direction we wanted to head in, what our core values were, and we were able to then get the senior administration in on that and just start taking a look at that and figure out, is it practical? Uh the next thing we were able to do is bring in this other group, you know, bring in this group to get an outside view of it and kind of look at our existing framework, right? Because we're essentially operating under a government that was built by three administrations ago and a government that was severely wounded during the last recession. And now we operate, we amend things as we go along, we bring on some some positions here and there. But as an organization, even culturally, I still hear about it. Well, that position was removed in twenty twelve or so on and so forth. That that's something that that is almost like canonical um to how we operate, which um I like the idea of strategically looking at like, where do we want to go? Well, we know where we want to go. We establish that as a board and we working on that with the senior leadership's team. So where do we want to go? Okay, that's great. How do we get there? And um there's a number of things there like, so if we are a best-in-class finance department, but are there other things we can do so that when a board member says, I want to know if if Liberty Fest turns like, you know, a profit? Have you built in all of those costs? Well, they they would know that. I want to know what the true cost of running an election is because you've got some reoccurring costs, you've got some refundable costs, right? So like I budget a hundred percent of the costs, but I also get reimbursed by the state of Michigan. So if you want a true cost of of what it costs to run the election versus, well, the taxpayers are paying for it, we're learning the same things. And so that's an interesting thing to talk about from a transparency standpoint, right? If you look at our budget document, do you have any idea what it would take to run water billing? No, you don't, right? Like so like, I'm just saying like that's those are kind of all the like little little things that I think are really helpful for for me in that regard. And then I really like the idea of tying all the work that we do and justifying it as it relates to realizing the board, the board vision. I was excited to see the position of deputy supervisor, that that kind of like a an unelected position at the top. I think that's that's central to kind of, you know, I thought the analysis on that was pretty thorough, comparing us to the existing charter townships of similar size, looking at that. I liked the uh, you know, and then just overall, looking at the at the at the at the whole organization and kind of kind of as it as it stands, the program inventory also huge. And then justifying the program offerings, like does this fit into the board goals, right? You know, we'll know, okay, well, then let's talk about that. Is that a priority now, right? By its sheer inability to not fit into the board goals, it now ceases to be a a a higher level priority. So there's a lot of organized and methodical um ways of kind of objectively looking at at the at the organization, which I think has to some degree lapped. I I thought the uh analysis of the merit system as it currently exists was was very spot on. It's a I I tend to be a as the clerk, I tend to be a rules person. And so when I see conflicting language in in ordinance versus policy, when I see conflicting language in policy versus policy, right? So do I do I follow addendum A or do I follow addendum, you know, subsection twelve, right? That puts me in a really awkward position. And so like the the thoroughness and the clarity that kind of goes in that that I think bubbled up organically through the process of of bringing people into this equation, leaders from the union, employees and allowing them anonymously provide insight and information, gave us a lot of a lot of stuff that that was, I think, really critical. So, yeah, I'm I'm grateful for the work. I think this is a phenomenal phenomenal report. Yes, the implementation will be it will be will be challenging to some degree. And then also getting getting board buy-in um will also, you know, is also important, I think. Was definitely hesitant to aggressively bringing forward RBAs. I think that organizationally, there were some things at work um that have necessitated some things being pushed forward. And and ultimately, the electorate, um they elected Anne Marie Graham Hudek to be the CEO, right? And typically, a CEO of an organization, whether it a corporate, a nonprofit or a government agency will bring forward agenda items and then ask the legislative body to act on them. And um to some degree, I ever I kind of respect that that format in that, um you know, if you believe the best thing to do and it coming from this objective third-party report is to, you know, hire a deputy supervisor, well, then by all means, you know, I can't hold you accountable as supervisor if I don't give you the tools that both you and this group say that you need, right? It's not fair of me, you know, it's like if I tell you I need a million dollars to run an election, you give me a half a million dollars. Well, that's fine and dandy, but when the when the when the wheels fall off the cart, I'm pointing my finger at you. You can point your finger at me if you want to, but ultimately, I told you what I needed to execute, you know, to to execute what you what you tasked me to do. And if you choose not to give me that, you know, so I don't know how to hold Anne Marie accountable if I don't necessarily uh move forward on some of this stuff. So but I like the idea, it's good conversation, and I definitely think there needs to be follow-up on this because it's huge, right? It's a big it's a big report and there's a lot there.
Right, no, thank you. I agree. And that that's true and that's so we can um I trying to schedule a meeting for us a couple hours with the staff. And so at the next uh study session next week, we can dive into this a little more with some of the priorities we think are important and you guys can discuss them. We'll discuss them with the staff and then you guys can discuss them in the study session.
Yeah, I think I think that's a great idea. We can uh go over this next uh Tuesday and see what the board, what everybody's feelings are to try and um try and set some goals.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? And I appreciate, like Michelle said, we've asked for some samples already of um job descriptions for like the IT coordinator and um she sent them from some other communities, so that really helps us get get a basis on on as to what we're looking for. And so anything else, um I you know, also informed everybody that we can continue to ask questions like Michelle said, thank you. You know, our our relationship doesn't end tonight. We need some clarifications or more questions. I know Wendy sent a couple tonight. So that should help us also. Wendy, did you have any questions? No, we might not have gotten to any of them.
Okay, not not for this forum, we can talk talk about it to them offline.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Let's see if we have any hands in the audience. More to come and more questions answered, definitely. Help everyone understand where we need to go and where we are. Well, Michelle and Mark, thank you again very much for your professional presentation and we look forward to getting a copy and we'll put it on the our internet for everyone to read and then we'll start churning through it, working together. We really appreciate, you know, how you've helped us as being a third party and taking an insight to, you know, the great, great employees.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to pass the consent calendar?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C one, consider second reading of an order of an amendment to Penex A zoning of the ordinance as regarding J S E investments LLC rezoning. Item C two, consider the purchase of a one-year extended warranty for eight hundred megahertz radios. Item C three, request approval of email office three sixty-five service renewal. And item C four, consider approval of solar wind software contract renewal for annual maintenance and technical support.
Support. Thank you, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Orinsky.
Hi.
Hi.
Gouli.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll move on to our general calendar. Item G one, can I have a motion to consider special land use and site plan for automobile filling multi-use station Barbet MSD?
The add-on, did where did we add that to?
Oh, G seven.
Seven. The end. All right, you made that a motion to, pardon me. All right, Madam Supervisor, I move that the board Sorry.
That's a long one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's never seen that format before. Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, uh approval of special land use and site plan for Barbet Automobile Filling Multi-Use Station. Whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval and site plan approval for an automobile filling multi-use station on the tax parcel listed at four four one three five zero four road. Whereas the planning commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted eight to one to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in sections two set twenty-seven point zero three subsection C of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan hereby approve the special land use and site plan for an automobile filling multi-use station on the tax parcel listed at four one three five zero four road as the request meets the special land use and site plan criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided subject to approval of the proposed access easement to the north and approval by all state, county and municipal agencies.
Support.
Thank you. The project sponsor proposes to rebuild the gas station at four one three five zero four growth at the northeast corner of Ford Road and Hagerty Road and is applied for special land use approval and site plan approval for an automobile filling multi-use station. The current use of the site is an automobile filling station which allows for a gas station and convenience store. The proposed automobile filling multi-use station allows a fast food restaurant in addition to the gas station and convenience store and the fast food restaurant is proposed on the east side of the building. The proposed fast food restaurant will not have a drive-through. The site is zone C four interchange service and an automobile filling multi-use station with a fast food restaurant as a special land use in the C four zoning district subject to the use standards of the zoning ordinance. The site is also located in the CBD Central Business District overlay. At its meeting on June seventh, twenty twenty-one, planning commission recommended approval of the special land use and site plan subject to conditions. The planning commission had previously reviewed the special land use at its meeting on March eighth, twenty twenty-one, at which time it held it, excuse me, held its public hearing and recommended approval of the special land use. However, after the March eighth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting, the applicant modified the site design, which the planning commission reviewed at its June seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting and recommended approval. Jade, Director Smith, do you have any additions?
Um I just have a comment and I'm not sure if Patrick does, I know he's on the call, but I I want to say that uh we've had this for quite some time and working on it, but we've also been working closely with MDOT because the Boulevard project um had the potential to affect this particular redevelopment of the site. So I want to thank the petitioner for um their patience as we worked with MDOT on that as well. And I turn it over to Patrick if he has anything more to add.
Uh, thank you. I don't have anything uh additional to add. And as Jade had mentioned, uh the applicant had been working with MDOT. This is one of the first applications that we've seen uh where the applicant has been working with MDOT based on some of MDOT's proposed designs for the Ford Road Boulevard along the corridor. This site is unique in the sense that it's at the intersection of Ford Road and Hagerty Road at the northeast. So it's impacted by MDOT's proposed project, not just on the Ford roadside, but also on the Hagerty roadside. So uh there was a review by MDOT, there were comments by MDOT in terms of design considerations and those were incorporated into the applicant's design. So the design and the review process took a little bit longer, but uh MDOT was very involved throughout the process and was helpful in terms of sharing some of its proposed designs to assist the applicant.
Thank you. Summer, did you have anything to add?
I'll just mention that when this um originally came before the planning commission, um I did vote no because I was concerned about traffic at that intersection, um especially with a drive-through restaurant. But once they made the modification to remove the the drive-through restaurant, I was I was supportive of the project. I was, I was supportive of the project, as were a few of the other planning commission members who voted no originally. So.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Tanya?
Just a quick question on the timeline for this construction, because is it going to be, I'm assuming it's going to be completed before the Boulevard constructions? Because there was a concern when the traffic impacts that the, you know, the right turns and the left turns. So are they going to be incorporated before the Boulevard gets completed?
We anticipate that the construction for the proposed project will probably be before the Ford Road Boulevard construction, just because of the complexity of the Ford Road project and the time that that will take. So in the meantime, the applicant will have right turn in, right turnout only at Ford and Hagerty, or at least right turnout only in terms of the right turn in. I'm, I'm not sure how easy that is to, to incorporate, but definitely the right turn out so that, that, that traffic can be better managed. One of the other items that will be helpful in the meantime is that there is a proposed cross-access easement to the north. There's an east-west drive just north of the, the site. So with that cross-access, that will allow another outlet for traffic, as well as traffic that may come in from, say, the hotels to the north and northeast that want to go to the station. They know, would no longer have to go onto the road to get to the station. They could go right through that access drive. So we're hopeful that that cross-access will also alleviate some of the traffic and provide another option for those that want to exit the site, especially when it's busy, to use that access drive to exit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Um, yeah, thanks, Patrick. Just wondering, from the, this special land use review standards that are in the narrative, it, it sounds like MDOT has not given approval on this yet. And if not, could you give us an idea of when that might come?
Uh, sure. At the, at the latest, it comes typically well after site plan approval. And the reason for that is if, for example, the site plan is approved, there is still some extensive engineering that applicants have to do. And sometimes it's after site plan review from the municipality where they, they then go ahead with that extensive engineering and then go and get the state and county permits, because those permits require that, that detailed engineering. So they would still have some time before they would obtain an MDOT permit. But what they do have is they have MDOT's feedback based on the layout that they showed MDOT in terms of feasibility, geometrics, and layout. And MDOT had, had given its feedback and stating that the initial indication was that MDOT was, was accepting of the plan.
Okay. All right. But your recommendation and that of the planning commission is based on the, the condition of MDOT approval, which, I mean, obviously it should be, but just want to make sure that that is, is understood.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And it could be something in its state, county, and municipal. So it could be something that comes up during MDOT review. There could be something that comes up during a Wayne County review, because Wayne County would have jurisdiction of not only stormwater, but also Hagerty Road. And then during municipal review, our engineering division will also do an engineering review if the site plan is approved, and they do a much more detailed engineering review. Usually there aren't items that come up during those reviews that cause a site plan to come back for reconsideration if there's a major design change. But occasionally that does happen, and that would be a condition with this one, is that if there are any, any changes, and they're, they're significant, they would come back for consideration. So that's, that's a proposed condition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So Patrick, I was under the, and I just thought about this, weren't they supposed to, was, is it MDOT or the state of Michigan, aren't they putting those fast chargers, DC fast chargers, off of Hagerty Road? Was, was that the gas station they were going to put it at? That's what I was under the impression. And so does that affect the plans?
I think that I'll have to verify, but I believe that was at the station at the corner of Michigan and Hagerty off of 275. But I need to verify that.
Okay, okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, great. All right, Clerk Segras, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Worninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G2, can I have a motion to consider the approval of low bidder for the 2021 tree removal and pruning project to the Davy Tree Expert Company?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the tree pruning and removal bids and issue purchase orders from expenditure account or list to the Davy Tree Expert Company for an amount not to exceed $41,005 and from expenditure account listed to the Davy Tree Expert Company for an amount not to exceed $7,645 with its authorization for a contingency of 10% from each to address any additional tree removal and pruning that becomes necessary.
Support.
Thank you. The Planning Services Division received three qualified bids for the 2021 tree removal and pruning project for tree maintenance work on major roads. Specific projects include tree pruning and removal along Lily Road between Warren and Saratoga Road and along Palmer Road between Canton Center Road and Hagerty Road. Additionally, this project involves removing all dead trees, which are 263, and stumps 40. Surveyed in the 2019 Canton Township tree inventory and targeted areas of high priority pruning as needed. The township's bid specifications also called for unit prices for as-needed tree, tree pruning. And the township's bid specifications also called for unit prices for as-needed tree pruning and removal work within an additional road corridors, parks, township facilities, golf courses, and other municipal, municipal property. Therefore, the Leisure Services Department is able to use the bid pricing for tree removal and pruning for its facilities. Of the trees and stumps to be removed, 66 are located on township property. The three bidders were Davy Tree Expert Company, Chop, and Lim Walkers Tree and Snow. Davy Tree Expert Company had the lowest bid for all pruning, tree removal, and stump removal, while Lim Walkers had the lowest bid for the individual tree pruning and removal portion of the bid. Davy's lower bid prices for the pruning and removal along Palmer Road and Lily Road make Davy the lowest bidder overall. Davy will also provide certified arborist consultation as needed. Based on Davy's bid prices, the total cost for tree removal, stump removal, and pruning will be $48,650, of which $41,005 will be paid by the Municipal Services Department for street trees, and $7,645 will be paid by the Leisure Services Department for removal of the 66 trees and stumps on township property. An additional contingency of 10% is recommended to address any additional tree removal and pruning that becomes necessary. Jade, do you have any additions?
Not really. It's pretty self-explanatory. This is part of our tree management program. I do want to bring it to everyone's attention that the 2019 Canton Township tree inventory actually was conducted by our interns that were in the planning division that particular year. So it was a project that we're obviously putting to, to really good use to maintain the trees throughout the township.
Great, thank you.
And I believe that, and I think Patrick headed up the, that initiative with those interns that year as well.
Thank you. Putting them to good use. Any questions or comments? All right, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Worninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G3, consider reserving funds for property owner reimbursement for landscaping restoration for the Ridge Road paving project.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve reimbursement funds to Kristen Warala, the property owner at 6430 Ridge Road from the Capital Outlay Infrastructure Fund and to approve the attached budget adjustment.
Support.
Thank you. In 2020, Canton Township retained Dan's Excavating Incorporated, instructed the Ridge Road Ford de Warren paving project. The majority of the project was completed in 2020, and the road was open to traffic in November. Dan's completed some restoration along the road this spring. However, as agreed by the township in Dan's in 2020, some of the restoration, planting, tree, and landscaping for the residential properties along Ridge Road will be handled directly by the township. Property owner of 6430 Ridge Road has agreed to complete much of the restoration themselves. The township proposes to reimburse them for expenditures with a not-to-exceed amount of $7,500. Jade, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, no, this is just pretty standard when we have a major road project like that and work out some right-of-way agreements with homeowners.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Worninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval for the emergency purchase order tent rental at the Katie Boyer barn at Preservation Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the emergency purchase order for the tent rental at Preservation Park to Canton Canopies at 4871 Raton to Drive here in Canton, Michigan, 48187, in the amount of $10,970 to be paid from the account number listed, maintenance, repair, buildings, and additions, and to approve the attached budget adjustment.
Support.
Thank you. In order to continue providing a number of highly attended services to the public, Canton Leisure Services is recommending to rent a tent from Canton Canopies to provide shade in Preservation Park due to the fire that destroyed the Katie Boyer barn. The cost of the tent rental has been quoted at $10,970 for a ten-week period and will be used at this location until the end of the season or until a new structure can be constructed. On June 9, 2021, an email request was made to the insurance provider explaining the need for a tent at the location. On June 30, 2021, a return email was received from the insurance provider confirming the authority to rent the tent as a temporary structure for the event scheduled this year for the Township of Canton. Due to the urgency of this matter, a member, memo was sent to the Supervisor and Finance Director requesting to approve an emergency purchase order. Part approval of purchase order was submitted, which is attachment A. Greg, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Summer?
Comment, which is not really related to the tent, but I was bummed that bites for the barn was tonight during a board meeting, and so we can't attend. So if there's any way that we could attend on August the 3, and maybe not have a study session that week, that would be great.
We have that planned for you. We are planning a grand opening of the pavilion on August 3 at 5:30, just prior to the bites at the barn that evening. And we've talked with the Supervisor and reserved that to have no study session following.
Thank you.
Kate?
So, yes, I echo what Summer said. And in fact, I had already brought it up to Greg because I was so bummed about missing tonight, although I love being here in the meeting with you all. But just wanted to clarify, it says that the tent will be used at the location until the end of the season or until a new structure can be constructed. Well, I'm thinking that a new structure is not going to be constructed before the end of the season.
Would be highly surprised if that happened, because we have nothing in the works at this point. So no, it'll be through the end of the season.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Worninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G5, consider approval of a purchase order increase for the owner's representative reimbursable expenses.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order increase to PO listed for the owner's representative reimbursable expenses to plant Moran Cressa 27400 Western Highway, Southfield, Michigan 48034, in the amount of $15,000 to be paid from the account number listed, Community Improvement Professional Services, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Thank you. In February 2021, an RBA was presented to the board recommending to award a contract and approve a purchase order to plant Moran Cressa as the owner's representative for select capital improvement plan projects in a total amount of $320,388. This cost did not include reimbursable expenses, which is presented in the contract, is not to exceed $15,000 for the duration of the contract. We are recommending to increase purchase order as listed by $15,000 to accommodate the reimbursable expenses. Greg, any additions? Anything else?
No, this was just an oversight when we did the initial approval. We didn't include the reimbursable. So we need to get that cleaned up so we don't run out of money by the end of the process.
Any questions? Okay, Clerk Segras, please take a roll call on the motion.
Worninski.
Aye.
Bully.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segras, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
And Snyderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item G6, consider approval to relocate facilities maintenance from Leisure Services to Municipal Services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the relocation facilities maintenance division from Leisure Services to the Municipal Services Department.
Support.
The Canton Board of Trustees approved an organizational assessment by the Novak Consulting Group in February of 2020. Out of that assessment came the recommendation to relocate and establish formal service level agreements for facilities maintenance. There are many reasons the Supervisor agrees with relocating facilities maintenance from a Leisure Service Department to the Municipal Services Department. Number one, our Leisure Services programming is expanding to meet the goals of the board and needs of the community. Number two, our facilities manager retired in May, and you met John at the beginning of the meeting, who has, has replaced him. Number three, our CAP projects require additional resource focus, and implementing this recommendation immediately upon board approval would more efficiently address internal resource staffing to serve our residents. And number four, moving facilities maintenance to municipal services will help to better align technical capabilities and resources. As you can see in the strategic plans and goals, we have both Canton Township Board of Trustees' vision, mission, and organizational climate and culture, which is part of this assessment. It calls it out. So those are the reasons that I believe we should move them forward. Right now, this kind of aligns more with the technical, and we have a lot more for our Leisure Services Parks and Recreation Group to work on. And I just think this is a better fit. And I think we've discussed this also in our goal sessions. But does anyone have any questions? Kate?
Let Stephen go first.
Okay, Stephen.
Um, well, I just wanted to say that when I first joined this organization as a trustee nine years ago, I was actually really surprised that this function was performed by Leisure Services. It was not something that I expected. And it was a little confusing to me when Greg's predecessor would start talking about facilities and things like that when she was responsible for Leisure Services. But she and Greg both have done a great job leading this organization. And I'm always amazed on how they're able to jump on things in emergencies. And I think the world of both of them. So I appreciate the work that they've done in this area. I know Jade will, will do a great job also in, in leading this. And as the Supervisor put in her RBA, it seems like there will be more synergy with other things that his organization does. So because of that, I'm, I'm supportive of this move. So thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
So, yeah, I want to echo what Stephen said. I also was really surprised to find facilities under Leisure Services when I started. And I think Greg's done a great job. But I do think this makes more sense. My chief concern, though, is how are we going to support Jade as he takes on additional employees and additional work? So if you could just touch on that, Anne Marie, I think that would be great. Because the, the last thing I would want to do is, you know, put, move this into municipal services and then bind that. you know, put, move this into um municipal services and then find that it's just overwhelming with the amount of work that I know Jade already has, so.
Thank you. Yes, that is actually a good segue into the next item, but I mean to another item. However, Greg and Jade are still going to work very closely together. They have been actually for the past three or four weeks while we talked to um each other and determined what each employee did and how we would work together. One of the items is to create department work orders between the departments. So as Greg needs items, he will work with Jade saying, these are the items I need and we will definitely support each other. I mean, we know that we have some more events coming up and we, the first thing that we agreed upon was that we were still under one umbrella and we still had to work together. So one of the items that was mentioned in the organizational assessment is to give Jade a deputy soup, a deputy um deputy for municipal services. And so that is one of the priorities that we'll ask for in the study session next week. And that will hopefully help alleviate some of that. Also bringing on the new facilities manager that you met at the beginning of the meeting. Uh we hope that will help alleviate that. Um he does, John does have some experience in facilities management, so we think that'll be a great help. But you're right, we will be um watching this closely and bringing on the deputy for Jade is one of the priorities that we'll bring forward next week. Will hopefully help to accomplish that, but we will still work with Greg and the team. But we have a lot of great things for Greg to do also. As you know, our board goals, we got a lot of parks and trails out there we want to work on and more programming.
Thank you.
The other questions or comments? Okay, great. Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Minsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
From Hughdak.
Hi.
Seagres eye Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes. Item G seven, um consider approval of a wage increase for leisure services, part-time seasonal and variable employees.
Madam Supervisor, this is um in the form of two motions. Move to approve a two dollar and fifty uh cent per hour wage incentive for all current and new higher leisure services and facilities maintenance positions and levels A through eight, eight through nine on the part-time seasonal variable wage scale effective July twenty-five, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Support.
Okay, thank you. So the Canton Leisure Services Department is heavily reliant on part-time employees. These individuals make up a dedicated workforce who contribute significantly to the overall operations and are essential for the facilitation of programs and services as well as the care and maintenance of township facilities, parks and spaces. Canton Leisure Services typically employs as many as three hundred and fifty part-time and seasonal employees during summer, making up eighty-five percent of the department staffing, as well as contributing an average of two hundred thousand hours of labor annually. As has been well documented, the region, state and nation continue to experience a significant shortage of workforce. Canton Township has not been immune to this shortage and currently short over ninety part-time and seasonal employees. The township continues to experience significant difficulties recruiting and hiring new employees as well as retaining the current workforce, which has resulted in reduced service levels and modified offerings to residents. To address this significant challenge, Leisure Services with the assistance of Human Resources is proposing a wage incentive of two dollars and fifty cents per hour to support current part-time employees as well as to recruit additional support to fill vacancies. This wage incentive is proposed to begin July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one and proceed until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. This timeframe will allow the township to evaluate the effectiveness of the program and recommend continuation and or a new pay, pay scale for part-time employees. This program would be available for all leisure services and facilities maintenance positions in level eight through nine on the part-time seasonal variable wage scale attachment A, will not include interns. Additionally, we are recommending a referral incentive to any current Canton Township employee who recruits a part-time seasonal variable employee to receive a hundred dollars per employee. To qualify for this incentive, the applicant must write the referring employee's name on their application when they apply and work two hundred fifty hours within the first six months. Um this is something that we um had talked about. I mean, we're just, we're just seeing the board. Um actually, Greg, why don't you just kind of give summary of what we propose to, you know, having to cut back if we don't get these employees? Greg or John?
Sure, I can do that. Um so we've had to make several modifications to programs and services due to the challenge of uh hiring part-time positions this year. We've reduced our capacity in summer camps. Um we've reduced open swim times. We have not been able to offer any swim lessons this summer. Um the probably the most significant change that you'll see is beginning this Sunday, July eighteenth. We will be closing the summit on Sundays, including all of our fitness classes, pool times, et cetera. Um we're not going to offer any pavilion rentals after August thirty-first as most of our employees are returning back to school. Um having trouble accommodating community special event applications. The block this fall, we're reducing to basically offer our core services and no additional um programs outside of our block drop-in and after-school program. And then maintenance in our parks and our facilities has also been um or having delay or lengthened mowing cycles, reduce our service levels. Um just not, not able to to meet the standards that uh our staff sets for our our facilities and parks. Um when you look out, it may not be evident to everybody, but when when our staff looks out and when I look out, I know we're not able, we're not keeping our um parks up to the standard that we hold ourselves to in Canton. So um this is, this is a critical step for us um to recruit new employees, but also to to almost as important, or as important, if not more important, is to maintain the individuals that we have. Um we've been slowly losing people to other positions and not able to fill those positions. And then that adds more stress and more demands on to those that are left in our full-time staff as um working many hours of part-time positions, working the front desk at the summit or um run out in the field running programs when they should be doing administrative things and that's pulling them away from those positions. So this is a critical, critical step for us to be able to even think about accomplishing some of the board goals that are set out. Um when you get our staff back in their primary roles instead of filling um part-time roles. So we appreciate um even resources, support and finance and municipal service, everyone kind of coming to the table over the last few days to to help brainstorm some ideas that would help us address this issue for us. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. John, did you have anything to add?
I think Greg covered it very well. This is going to be great, uh not only for potential applicants, but for our current employees who've been working so diligently as well.
Yeah, thank you. And we sent a note out to, if any of you are members of the summit, we sent a note out to membership that we were starting to close on Sunday and we've been getting some pushback on that. You know, some residents just use the facilities on the weekend. So this was um a discussion at the weekly staff meeting to determine how we can maybe alleviate some of what we're, what's happening here in in the township and across country.
So we'll still be closed on uh on Sundays, right?
Yes.
Until we're able to um hire some new staff, we'll, we'll be, continue to be closed on Sundays. And unfortunately, um in the short term, there could be other closures or other reduction in hours at the summit um until we get more staff in there. We're, we're doing our best to avoid that, but we want to make sure we put our staff in a position to be safe and successful as well. And we don't want to have too few people there for for our staff to feel comfortable.
Any other questions? Stephen?
Question. Thanks. Uh I think it's a good approach. Um one uh is I believe that the extra stimulus money for those unemployed extends through the beginning of September. I don't know if I have that right, but um that's what I've read. So do we feel after that time that we'll be able to more likely um get people? I noticed we're doing this through the end of the year.
It's really, it's really hard to say. Um it's kind of depends on what everyone else does and when people feel comfortable getting back into the the workforce. It's really kind of unprecedented times right now. We haven't ever experienced. Had trouble hiring lifeguards since ninety-nine when I started in this industry, but um we haven't had this widespread of a problem. So we really don't know and we don't know if two fifty an hour is going to solve the problem or not. But we wanted to start somewhere, um see what the success is and then we can, like we, I mentioned in the the action request is that we'll evaluate the success. And then hopefully, um you know, the the part-time wage scale hasn't been modified since, I believe, two thousand sixteen. So we're going to have to look at some sort of a study or analysis of what, what do we need to do with that wage scale going forward? Is it just going back after we kind of get through this bubble or do we need um more widespread changes or an overhaul to the wage scale?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah, um I, Greg, I, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Um just in my little informal um analysis of what's going on, um my son has been applying for jobs and um there are a lot of places that do pay a lot more than we do per hour for part-time work. And um I think this brings us more into line with um those other um employers. So I think it was proactive on your part to to, you know, bring this to us. Um that being said, I do think that um we do need to do an analysis, a more formal analysis to see um, you know, by the end of the year where, you know, where we should be. So, thank you.
Summer?
Yeah, I mean, and and my, my son has also been, I'm looking for jobs. Um and he's six, he's sixteen and, you know, a lot of places are paying fifteen dollars an hour now um for part-time work. And if you look at um what an additional two dollars and fifty cents is to someone working thirty hours a week, that's just an additional seventy-five dollars. And if you are, I don't know, a parent, if you are um, you know, somebody that uses transport, would have to use transportation to come to work, that's potentially like two tanks of gas. Um and so I would encourage us to look at increasing it more. Um I will vote in favor of this today, but I think um to be in line with some of the other um recreation places um around the community, I think we should look at that and see and make sure that our wages are aligned with that.
Okay, Tanya?
Yeah, I, I agree with both um Kate and Summer that we have to do some sort of analysis in our part-time wage scale uh for the future because I think the whole, the pandemic has brought in the, you know, the wage issues um right in the forefront and and that, you know, it is uh something that everyone is looking at. And so we are also, as the township government, should look at this for the long term.
Thank you. Anyone else? Michael?
I will agree with everybody else. And um you know, we um, this last weekend, we did pride outside at Heritage Park. And, you know, it was a phenomenal event. There was a lot of participation. And it was put on by a leader services team that is working extremely hard right now. And they don't have the typical part-time support that they've had in years past. And I think about that coupled with um all of the healthy environment uh board goals that we kind of came up with. And I think about um to implement that vision, you know, we have to have a robust and a healthy workforce and we have to be able to, to do that. And so um obviously, I will vote in support of both of the motions, the one that I made and then the one that I will, will make um after we're done debating this, this one. I also agree about the need to analyze what we pay, um what we pay people. I know um it's expensive and it's costly, but I also know that coming out of you know, the last year where a lot of people weren't guaranteed tomorrow or we lost loved ones. I think people, a lot of people have reevaluated some pretty key things about, about their, about their life. I know Oklahoma was the first state to stop the bonus um unemployment. And they did not see a huge rush of people entering the workforce again. So as much as that's a nice political talking point, I would be shocked if in September, all of our labor woes are satisfied because we're not giving people extra money. My gut tells me is that people are making negotiations. Um yeah, it's comfortable. You've got the money. Um but I think people are questioning whether or not they want to sell their time, which isn't guaranteed anymore after the last traumatic year they experienced. At a wage they might not think is either worth it or to do work they don't necessarily think is meaningful maybe. Now, working for Canton Township is meaningful and what we do is meaningful. And I think if we can figure out a way to solve the compensation problem without breaking the bank, um especially once you get people in the door, um you know, we have, we don't have a retention problem um when it comes to these positions. Uh because once people come here and they, they have fun and they, they like working with the team, they, they stick around. So I really like the idea of getting people in the door. Uh and I also like the idea of kind of studying what, you know, paying people essentially what they're worth, what the market says they're worth and then what our values say they're worth. But doing it in a way that, that respects all the existing employees and doing it in a way that is budgeted and that is responsible from a financial, from fiscal, fiscally responsible way. So, yeah, I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. No, you're very, it's very true. We have, we will do the wage study and determine where we are. And you're right, it might even change, right? As we get through this bubble, who knows, but we will definitely keep track of it. I think um like Michael said, it was a good event on Friday and there weren't a lot of employees that did that. They, they really worked a lot of overtime to get that together and they did a great job. So Clerk Seagres, can you please take a roll call on the motion?
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdak.
Hi.
Seagres eye Slavens.
Hi.
And Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion one passes. Clerk Seagres, can you please read motion two?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a referral incentive to any current town, Canton Township employee who recruits a part-time seasonal variable employee in positioning levels eight through nine on the part-time wage scale through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one to receive one hundred dollars per employee. To qualify for this incentive, the applicant must write the referring employee's name on their application when they apply and they must work twenty-five, two hundred fifty hours within the first six months.
Support.
Do you have any discussion on this one? Additional discussion?
You know, the, yeah, the only thing I'll say is, you know, we have great employees and uh they can go out and, and advertise what a great place it is because this is a great place to work. Um and it's a great incentive for our employees, but they're, they're the best voice uh for how great it is to work here. So I think this is good.
Thank you. Yes, and definitely all of you, the board members, you know, reach out to organizations and let them know about these jobs and try to get some people from our community to work here. Uh Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Borninsky.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Ganguly.
Hi.
Graham Hughdak.
Hi.
Seagres eye Slavens.
Hi.
Snyderman.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, let me see. Let's go back to the top. So I am looking for any additional public comment on the agenda. Any public comment? If you can raise your hand. Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, I see none. Um any staff or board comments?
I just, um if I may, I didn't have an opportunity to speak on the law. I just, if I may, I didn't have an opportunity to speak on, well, I did have an opportunity. I missed the opportunity to speak on the transfer of the facilities, and I just want to take that opportunity to talk about, you know, I know we have an ambitious agenda when it comes to parks, recreation, and kind of the scope and the relevance we want to have to residents, and I just want to say, really looking forward to Greg, your team, and what you put together here over the next couple of years, especially if we can get you the resources that you need. So just please know, well, and I think I see John the Fever on the screen, too. So, one, we appreciate awesome program and what you're doing right now, but also understand what we've asked of you and what we've asked for you to deliver in the next couple of years, and so, yeah, we appreciate it, and we're glad that we'll have your sole focus on that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? Greg?
Yeah, just real quick, I'd like to thank the board for their support for the last item on the agenda there. That'll be a huge message to our employees that have been giving so much over the past several months, that they are valued, they are critical to the success of the township, and it'll help us to really, hopefully, move forward and find some new great people out there to join our team and really help us to move this goals forward, so thank you for your support. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Summer?
Michael alluded to this, but I just wanted to say that I was not able to attend Canton Pride Outside. I was out of town, but I did hear a lot of great things from many community members about the great job that Leisure Services did, so I just wanted to thank you all for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Sure.
I saw your square flash.
Oh, I don't know why, but yeah, Pride Outside was a lot of fun, and I had a blast. My daughter went with a friend, and they had a blast, too, so thanks to Greg and Laura and everyone involved. It was fabulous.
Yes. Beautiful night. A lot of dancers on the stage. Started out by Michael's two-year-old son, kind of got us all dancing, and it just took off from there. Lot of fun.
He had a blast.
He did. Any other events coming up? Obviously, the one tonight, but any others coming up that we want to announce to anyone? Okay, great. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Support.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, please take a roll call on the motion.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Slavens.
Aye.
Seagrist. Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Great. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Bye.
Bye-bye.